Welcome. Thank you for joining us today, October 1st, 2024, at the Virtual Candidate Forum for the Piedmont Board of Education. I'm Jennifer Nixon, a member of the League of Women Voters of Piedmont. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues or ballot measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. Before we introduce the candidates, I have a few logistical items to review for everyone. The candidates have all agreed to participate under guidelines set for this forum. Microphones are muted for everyone except the candidates and the moderator. Video images will show the candidates and your moderator. We are recording this forum and will be posting it via the League of Women Voters of Piedmont's YouTube channel and the website. The link to the League of Women Voters of Piedmont will be posted in the chat box. Our candidates for the Piedmont Board of Education are Michael Malione, Susie Struble, and Max Roman. Good to see you all tonight, and thank you for being here. Former Board of Education candidate Victoria Rosenbaum has withdrawn from the race, but will still appear on the ballot. She wrote in a public letter, "I have decided that this is not the right time for me to serve on the PUSD school board. Unfortunately, I've been informed by the city clerk that it's not possible to remove my name from the ballot. In light of that fact, I'm endorsing the candidacies of Susie Struble, Michael Malione, and Max Roman, and I'm encouraging others to support them too. They each have unique strengths, perspectives, and a strong desire to promote PUSD's mission, and I believe PUSD will continue to thrive with them at the helm." I'd like, next, to present a bit of background information about this office. You will vote for three candidates. A five-member Board of Education oversees the district. The members are elected at large and serve for a maximum of two consecutive four-year terms. Board members are accessible to the community and integrate public input into their deliberations and decision-making. The Board acts in the best interest of all students, reviews and approves the budget, authorizes expenditures, and employs all personnel, including the superintendent, and develops local education vision, district goals, and policy within the limits of the state education code. School Board members serve as liaisons on several committees or boards of other support groups such as the City District Liaison Committee, Piedmont Educational Foundation, each of the Parents Clubs, Curriculum Council, Athletic Boosters, and the Special Education District Advisory Committee. You are here because you want to make smart choices when you vote. The League is here to help you make a smart choice using a few simple rules to be sure you have the information you'll need to help you make that decision through a fair and balanced process. It's important to the League to give the community a voice, which is why we invited the community via the forum registration page to send us questions for the candidates in advance. Those questions have been sorted by a team of League leaders to avoid duplicate questions and to select those questions that are most important to the community. We will not be taking questions during this forum. The Q&amp;A and chat features have been turned off to minimize distraction. I'll remind the candidates of key ground rules. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. To keep the discussion flowing, candidates will be expected to keep answers to questions to one and a half minutes. These will be timed, and the timer clock can be seen by all. Viewers can minimize the timer clock by using the grab bar in between the left and right sides of the screen. In order to be fair to the other candidates, if you run over, I'll need to cut you off. We'll switch up the order so each candidate has a chance to answer first. I picked names out of a hat, and Max Roman will be going first. At the end of the Q&amp;A section, each candidate will have one minute to provide a closing statement. Now, let's begin with our first candidate, Max Roman, for your opening statement. Two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this and educating people about us and other candidates. It's an important function. I just want to take this time to introduce myself. I grew up in Piedmont. I'm a graduate of the school system here, and my children attend Piedmont schools as well. They are eight years old. I live in the house I grew up in with my wife and my two twins. I have been serving for the last two years on the PEF board. I'm now on the Executive Committee of PEF. I've also been very involved in the Wildwood Dance Club, and I'm also on the Board of multiple nonprofits. I think that these experiences have prepared me to understand the needs and challenges of the district and will be helpful in achieving success for all students, parents, and stakeholders in Piedmont Unified School District. The main reasons I'm running for the school board are as follows: to ensure positive academic outcomes for all children in the district, to make sure that all students and families are welcomed into the Piedmont community and made to feel that they belong, and to provide pragmatic, results-based decision-making at the district level. Some other topics that I'm particularly interested in are arts programs and funding, parent and community communication, metrics-based decision-making, with the primary metric being outcomes for children, and also exploring helping kids achieve, both college-bound kids and also alternative pathways. So those are sort of my main issues, and thank you again for everyone being here. I appreciate it.
Susie Struble.
Hey, thank you. Thanks to the League of Women Voters as well and everybody who's online right now. USD has strong foundations to build upon, but the past few years have presented real challenges, and of course, there will be more. Trust needs investment in rebuilding. I'm grateful to our remarkable teachers, staff, administrators, parents, and you, the broader Piedmont community, for staying committed to the district through it all. And I commend the current and recent board members for steering us well despite the very real personal costs. This past guidance and commitment has granted us what I think is a period of practical optimism. We are well positioned to make meaningful progress on several important fronts. One is to continue ensuring our teachers receive a living wage and know they are respected partners as we continue working through challenges in community. These things matter to retention, and they matter to attracting new, diverse, great teachers. Second, continuing to improve curriculum and our teaching practices. This is the constant, everyday work our teachers do. And lastly, to address the needs of our diverse student body, we must continue developing and executing on a comprehensive and resource approach to student wellness and community building, both of which directly support academic achievement. Through quantitative data and survey responses and direct stories, our students tell us they need this, and this work can only be done as a community. It must be driven by two principles: one, your kid is my kid; and two, all kids want to be good, but they often lack the skills and knowledge to do this in all situations. They need to learn, and that learning includes having space to mess up, generally understanding the difference between intent and impact, figuring out how to be accountable to one's peers and community, and critical engagement with tough topics. As a board member, I commit to working through difficult situations in ways that give grace and respect to others, as we all need to, even when we feel it's not merited. And in fact, that's probably when it's most needed, because it's there in those points of tension and conflict where if we listen and really work together to search for a common path, we will find a solution. I'm super confident in that, and I look forward to doing that work, too.
Right. Michael Malione.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you to the Piedmont League of Women Voters for running this forum and having me here tonight. It's my pleasure to be here. So I actually grew up in Oakland, not far from Piedmont, and we moved here about five and a half years ago. And in that time, I pretty rapidly joined Piedmont Alps, and I've been the president of Alps, which is Advancing Learning for Piedmont Students, since 2020, co-president most of those years. And during that time, I promoted initiatives to ignite student curiosity and nurture individual growth. And I've also, on my own, having taught at the Piedmont High School in 2019, 2020, which arose due to a staffing shortage, I came to then tutor in the community, and I've directly tutored many students in math and science. That is my specialty. And throughout these experiences, I continue to see the amazing potential in Piedmont students and the outside impact that the quality of their education can have in helping them to realize that. And so I see great potential for Piedmont Unified at this particular juncture to provide our students with an extraordinary public education and make it a great place to work. I will also say that in the last year, through my work with Alps, I partnered with the new district administration, Ariel Dolowich in particular, to run a math enrichment trial, which was an opportunity to put some new platforms and new technologies into practice with volunteers, mostly from the Alps community, to see about suitability. And one of those platforms now, which is Let's Go Learn, is being used for intervention in the math lab at the Piedmont Middle School. So as a member of the Board of Education, I will work tirelessly to ensure your student receives a solid education in a diverse, opening, and welcoming environment. Thank you.
Thank you all. Now it's time for the candidates to answer your questions. Susie, you will go first, then Michael, then Max. Michael, you'll go first for the next question, and so on. I will prompt you. Susie, the first question is, what are your top three priorities for Piedmont schools?
Ensuring the district's long-term financial stability is honestly my top priority. It's an ongoing challenge, and it's always the top priority. You know, a decent wage and benefits are essential to attracting and retaining amazing teachers. We don't have a great school if we don't have great teachers. I'm very worried about teacher recruiting and staffing and retention. We're very likely to have a significant number of very experienced teachers retire at the end of the year, and it's a tight hiring market. But I'm optimistic that Piedmonters are going to support Measure P, right? Which will help us to attract and retain these great teachers and staff. But money is the start, it's not the end, in ensuring we have a highly-desired workplace. My second priority, looking ahead, is Piedmont's flat parcel tax is coming up for about in a few years, and a renewal for that. That's been renewed nine times in a row, and we have to go all in now to make sure that there's a 10th renewal. And to achieve this, the school board needs to continue to guide PUSD in a way that reinforces the district's value to the entire city, right? And builds trust across our school communities. I would say another priority of mine is to ensure that we have good operations and structures and protocols in place to handle challenging student behavior. This has been a discussion point I've had with many other parents with the school district over the years, and I think we are on the tip of coming up with something that is going to really put students first, be very clear and transparent to parents, and really help us to build a better, more inclusive school community.
Thank you. Michael Malione.
Oh, yes. As a board member, my top priority will be ensuring that we deliver a high-quality and rewarding education to all our students. This involves focusing on both cost-effectiveness and educational progress. I believe that personalized learning will be essential for maximizing our impact with new structures of community partnership emerging to help us to accomplish more in this regard as we work with tighter budgets. We can envision a thriving educational environment that leverages the many resources and engagement of our community to ensure that every student discovers and rises to their full potential. I also have a strong passion for curriculum review and plan to engage deeply in this area. So this would be my second priority. While a well-designed curriculum alone won't solve all our challenges, it plays a crucial role in our educational success. In a district as well-resourced as Piedmont, both in terms of our talented students and dedicated staff, a robust curriculum can be transformative. A thoughtfully crafted curriculum not only aligns with academic standards, but also fosters critical thinking, creativity, and student achievement. It sets the foundation for effective teaching practices, supports diverse learning needs, and ensures that every student receives a high-quality education to prepare them for the future. The third, I would say, is to be more data-driven in all areas, including how we handle behavior issues when they arise, as well as staffing and what's working and what's not. And I believe we'll work together well on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Max.
The first priority, I would say, I echo Susie, in financial stability. I think that that's sort of the key from which all else flows. You know, we need continued community involvement and buy-in to continue to offer Piedmont students a terrific education. My second priority is student outcomes. I think that Piedmont offers most kids a great education, but is very focused on some very specific outcomes. And I think that there is a broader way to measure student success, and I'd be interested in diving into that on the school board. And my third priority is making sure that people are aware, communication with the community, which includes students, parents, residents of Piedmont, anyone with a stake in Piedmont schools. I think that at times, we don't communicate very well with the community about what's happening, both good and bad. And I think that sometimes that leads to missed opportunities with the community. And I also want to echo Susie in that continuing to support the district financially is crucial, both with the upcoming Measure P, as well as the renewal in two years of the other bond measure. So those are my priorities. Thank you.
Okay. Second question, Michael, you're going to start us off, is what changes, if any, would you like to see to PUSD's curriculum and why?
All right, thank you. So I think the number-one change I would like to see in the curriculum is more accessibility to content and a more structured, common set of content that people will go through at different paces and perhaps find different points of interest, but that is there, laid out for all to see, so that families, students, outsiders are all aware of what curriculum we use and how we use it. Of course, there's always going to be individual variation, teachers who do different things, but at least the material, the raw source of what it is we deliver in our curriculum, and broad strokes of how we vary it. Of course, every little detail can't be posted on the website, but I feel in the past, this used to happen more, and it happens less now. I am in favor of more direct and explicit instruction, so that'll be something that I seek to have alongside the excellent inquiry learning that we do and discovery, but I think you need both. And progression, really. Really, it is important to make sure everyone's learned some core subset before they move on. And so I will, particularly in the STEM fields, which is where I have the most expertise, push for these outcomes and changes.
And Susie.
There's no specific changes to the curriculum, as I understand it today, that I would have a very clear and well-informed opinion on, to be honest. There's a lot here that I need to learn. I would actually kind of step back and think a little bit more about the structure and process by which we make decisions around curriculum. And there are new things coming down the pike, such as with math, which Michael referred to, which Michael knows quite a bit about, which is going to be incredibly helpful on the board. Again, I'd want to look at structure and process. What kind of data are we looking at? What type of research are we looking at when we consider curriculum changes? Are we all working off the same page? Do we have the same understanding of limitations of that data, limitations of that research? And how are we bringing in parent and student input into these decisions as well? It's just a whole area I just don't know a lot about, but I'm eager to dig into more.
All right. So question number three, we're going to start off with Max. Question number three is, how can the Board help ensure...
Right, Jennifer, do I get to answer question number two? Sorry.
I'm sorry. Max, you're... Yes, yes, you do. Sorry.
Great.
I had just checked you out already.
No problem. I'll make it quick. So the first area that the curriculum is going to change by state law is ethnic studies is going to become a mandatory class for all graduating high school students. I've been engaged as a community member around what that could look like. I think we have a good solution in Piedmont that is sort of homegrown, and I want to make sure that that gets buy-in from all of the many groups that I think have an interest in what that's going to look like. The second is, I'd love to see creative writing and writing in general focused on a little bit more. I think that it doesn't have the focus it used to have, and I think that that's an important skill for kids, no matter what they pursue in their lives. And so I'd be interested in leaning into writing a little bit more at the secondary education level. And third, I think AI and computer science are areas that, you know, the curriculum lags behind the rest of the world a little bit, and I'd be interested in expanding that. Like Susie, I have a lot to learn when it comes to the... I have a lot of familiarity with the budget and how the finances of the school district work, but less in terms of operational elements. But from what I've been trying to gather information during this campaign, and that will continue, but those are the three areas that I'm the most interested in right now. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Yes, please jump in. If for some reason I skipped you, let me know. So Max, you're actually going to get us started with question number three. How can the Board help ensure that resources are appropriately channeled to teaching music, drama, and dance in this time of budget concerns?
That is a question near and dear to my heart. As you can see from the posters back here, my wife used to be on Broadway. I was a band kid when I was at Piedmont. And, you know, unfortunately, I think through no particular person's fault, some of the arts are not as robust as they used to be in Piedmont, and they are quite important to me. I think that there are creative ways to find money. I believe that there is a grant right now that has been found to supplement arts education. You know, and I want to make sure that that's being properly utilized in places where, you know, the community agrees it can do the most good. And then I think, you know, I'm a believer in the fact that we get whatever we get from the state, and we have to be creative and rely on ourselves. And I think that if, you know, if we make art important in the community, then hopefully we will find the money and the resources to have robust art programs. And, you know, that is an area that I'm really looking forward to delving into on the school board.
And Susie, how about you?
Yeah, I don't really know that I could add much that's intelligent or creative to what Max just said. My husband is an artist. Art matters a lot to me. You can't see behind me, but I've got all sorts of crazy art posters back there as well. And it is a tough trade-off, that we've made trade-offs historically that I'm not sure put the arts at the right, at the proper level that they should be. I think we need to tell that story more clearly, somehow get creative, and somehow keep fighting for that. And I look forward to working with the other board members and the community on that as well. Kind of going back and re-envisioning what would it mean for PUSD to be strong in the arts as well across the board? And how can we get back to that place and think about creative ways to do that?
Okay. Michael.
Yes, this is an area where I would likely defer to Max and Susie as well, although I did start my career in digital animation, so I have some experience and exposure to that side of the art, the business side of it as well. But I was on the technical aspect of that myself, but I worked pretty closely with artists. And the one thing I would add, I think those are all really good solutions and have proven well in the past, especially the community grants, would be to look at the new strategic plan, which involves partnerships, and looking for partnerships that could help to foster more arts or more variation, more opportunities to build economies of scale by having connections with other groups that are looking similar to us to find ways to get great results in the arts on a budget. And so that would be my two cents on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. So we're going to move to question number four. Susie, you're going to get us started. Question is, Piedmont students face myriad social pressures. How do you think the Board of Education can best address student mental and physical wellness while providing a rigorous education?
That is a... That's the million-dollar question, right? My hat's off to everybody in the district who has fought long and hard and established really thoughtful programs, the Wellness Center, counselors that we have, and just thinking about from K through 12, what our students need from a mental health perspective. I've been thinking a lot. I'm involved in the Piedmont Parents Network, which, as you may know, is a parent group at the middle school and high school where we talk about issues that our students are facing. And the kind of toxic achievement culture is always the number-one topic, next to phones. It is a hard nut to crack, and I'm really interested in working with the community to do that. I don't know if anyone's listened to last year's valedictorian speech from PHS, the graduation. I really encourage you to log on YouTube and find that. I was just looking through my notes here. I actually had a quote from him written down. But basically, he said, "I lost a lot by working so hard just to get what? So I could stand up here and be valedictorian." Our students know that, but they work in a world that, you know, that functions differently, that puts a lot of pressures on them. I'm not sure how we square that, but like I said, I'm looking forward to working with parents and our counselors, and those who know a lot more about student mental health than I do, to figure out how we can do K through 12, think more comprehensively, to make sure our students know they matter outside of their grades.
All right, Michael, how about you?
Well, I'm excited because I think we have a really good team on our school board, assuming the three of us are there, in addition to Lindsay and Ruchi, who are already on and continuing. And I think for me, the approach I take to look at it, in conjunction with others who'll be looking at it from different angles, is really about the academics and how to make the academics informative and challenging without being as stressful and without grading and rising in status to be sort of the be-all and end-all, the way things seem to have moved in recent years. So that would be my focus, would be to have the academics without the stress. And I have some ideas about how to accomplish that. Of course, there's always more to learn, and I will be taking a look at that, and that will be my perspective on the board.
Okay, Michael. Sorry, Max.
So this is something I've given a lot of thought about. I have a lot to learn. My kids are younger than I think the age at which this, you know, really becomes an issue for kids. But the first is, I am in favor... Obviously, there are a lot of ins and outs to consider, but I'm generally supportive of banning cell phones in schools. I think that that will help. I think that clear policies around behavior and following through on them, both for parents, but most importantly for students, is important, and making sure that it's administered fairly. I think that our administration has started a really good process in that area. I want to make sure that it gets seen through and that there's community buy-in on all of those policies. And then I think, you know, we have to listen to kids. In, you know, my previous career, sort of still my career, I worked in product development at tech companies, and I did a lot of consumer research. And one of the things that you notice when you start talking to people about, you know, any particular subject, is not to listen to the proposed solutions, but listen for patterns in what they say to identify the problems and then sort of begin a process for coming up with a solution. And I think we should be doing that with the kids in our schools more and talking to them and listening to them, not just through their parents, but actually them directly. So that's my three-point plan that I just came up with for that. Thank you.
Okay, all right. The fifth question, and we're going to start with Michael, is if Measure P passes, how do you think the funds should be allocated? For example, what percentage should be dedicated to teacher salaries and why? What other items, if any, should Measure P fund? Michael.
Oh, thank you. Yes, so my first response on that, having not really looked too closely, is that the bulk of it should go to the teachers. Teacher pay has been a real issue. Teacher retention, though there's a number of ways to build a supportive environment, pay is essential, and where we fall short on that, we need to be sure we have that covered sustainably. I also think there's some legal, some possible legal uses where it might not be 100% that. So I wouldn't say 100%, but I'm going to say, you know... you know, eighty or as much as we can in that direction, if not more. And then the rest would be whatever requirements, which I'm not all that familiar with, would would be required and where where if there is shortfall and this money is there for that, available for that purpose, we would kind of be um required or obligated to move it in that direction. But but I do think the purpose at at this point, Measure H originally back in twenty nineteen, I think it was, and Measure P now, um it it needs to be to support the teachers and make sure that they can afford to continue at Piedmont. And and so that we have retention as well as being able to um recruit and attract um to maintain the level that we have currently in terms of their their dedication and outstanding ability. Thank you.
And Max?
Uh, I I mean, I think the intent of Measure P is to give the teachers a raise, and so that's what I think it should be used for. Um, if there's money left over after they've gotten the raise that they've negotiated, then we should figure out how to give it also to the teachers. Um, I don't know exactly how, but I'm sure we can find a way, whether it's, you know, retention bonuses or recruitment bonuses or, you know, some way to you know, I think that I'm hopeful that Measure P will pass. I think that the intent is to give the money to the teachers. I think that that's the basis on which people are voting for it, and I want to honor all of those intents. And so I don't need my whole minute and a half. That's what I think it should be for.
Okay, Suzie?
I'll chime in and say what he said. I would just clap to that and I would completely agree. This is for teachers, teachers' pay and a living wage, so we can keep our great teachers here and attract more great teachers to to come to the Bay Area. I would look, also look at not only needed teacher salaries, but looking at um as teachers grow and develop in the district and and move up. Are there salary increases that we should be making along along that pathway as well? So that teachers, when they look at the whole package of coming to Piedmont, they actually see a financial pathway for them moving forward. They can imagine themselves being here for five years, ten years, right? Um, it's a tight market. No one's gonna move here and then see that there's, you know, no no chance for them to gain more money over the next, you know, five, seven years or whatever. That the next step is in, you know, so somewhere in the future. I'd also want to look kind of at the whole life cycle, if you will, or the whole teacher experience and find out kind of from sourcing teachers, if you will, to onboarding, all the way to exit. Um, what more is needed there so that teachers have the best experience that they can have? I think there's a lot we can learn from um exit interviews from teachers who have left the district. There's a ton we can learn from teachers who have decided not to accept job offers from Piedmont as well. I'd want to take those learnings in and think about it, like I said, kind of from that that whole experience and uh figure out where else more money from, if there's money left over, where that money should go.
Okay, thank you all. Um, so question number six, um Max, we'll start with you. How can the Board of Education help make Piedmont schools safe and supportive places for members of the LGBTQ plus community as students, teachers, and staff?
Um, you know, I think that sometimes what people want is grand gestures, and I think that those are fine and good sometimes. But I think that what really makes people feel included is when everyone actually includes people every day on a day-to-day basis. And instead of in addition to stating their values, live their values. And and I think that, you know, to act to to bring up a point, I brought up a couple of questions ago. I think that there need to be clear policies around behavior um that are fairly applied and clear to everyone. And that people are encouraged to be themselves and to bring themselves to school and that it's incumbent upon everyone else to do the same and to respect and honor who everyone is every day, which isn't necessarily a specific day or a a a big gesture. It's it's just accepting who everyone is on a day-to-day basis. And when people don't do that, having a clear process for how that's dealt with.
Okay, Suzie?
Once again, Max, I gotta hand it to what Max said. That's it, thumbs up. I, you know, I I think what I could add there, I mean, obviously, we would listen. I I would want to hear what do the students and and staff actually need? What are they not getting now? What are those gaps? How do we address them? I I I I don't know. And I would listen. It's a lot of curiosity and to make sure that we could do our best to 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 meet those 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 needs. Um, for me too, I think about, you know, the learning, where it's an education institution, right? With the learning is the background. And I think about our in my mind, our social emotional learning curriculum is is kind of the backbone of of K through twelve. And I'd love to see or consider how this could be expanded beyond our elementary school. I know our teachers do learning opportunities for our 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 kids uh in middle school and high school as well, but I would like to consider if some sort of formal curriculum around social mo- emotional learning at that age would would make sense. Anyways, social emotional learning is a background. I think on top of that, we need to figure out how we can bring in good anti-bigotry and anti-racist learning opportunities as well. Um, those things are complementary. They're very intertwined and it makes sense to think of them um as a as a as a one-two together. Um, and how that changes over time as our kids develop and become more sophisticated in their understanding and in some ways, sometimes more confused about how what they see reflected out there in the world. Remember what they're seeing online all the time is not what you should, not what you wish them to. You know, there's a lot of confusion often about what they see out there in the world and how um you know, how that, what that means for them here in town and um what that means for behavior, right, and how to build community, so.
Okay, Michael?
I agree, I agree with Max and Suzie um about the day-to-day being absolutely critical. Uh you know, but above and beyond grand gestures, that really needs to be working. And I think that may be where we we could do better. And um some of that is behavioral, the behavioral matrix we have. The, I I think we do need to look at bigotry. That's something that cuts across, you know, all all areas of of um our our um DEIB efforts. And as well as communication and and protocols for understanding um how it's gonna be communicated, just so everybody understands what to expect. And there isn't sort of a uh a flurry of activity every time something happens and nobody really knows what the response is gonna be because it hasn't been consistent in the past. And I think we're moving in that direction, but there's still more work to be done. Um, and then and then as well, also date, being data-driven and making sure that we we really do assess how people are feeling. And I know we have the California Healthy Kids Survey, which ties into the social and emotional learning or um the what the well-being and mental well-being and social emotional that Suzie mentioned. Um, but that may not be enough. We we may need to do more in that direction. And I would, I would support that and and be in favor of of moving toward it.
Thank you. All right, question number seven, and we will start with Suzie. Um, it is beyond increasing teacher salaries. What more should the Board of Education do to significantly improve teacher retention?
It's definitely true. Starts with money, but it does not end with money. Um, I would uh first of all, I know that the board and the administration is thinking about this right now. I don't have insight into their plans and what the what they are doing in this area. But obviously, it's a number one financial stability and making sure the teachers, we have great teachers and they're happy and thriving. Uh, it is super important. I would want to learn what's on what's on the docket right now. But I I go back to what I kind of said earlier. I would step back and think about the whole teacher experience in our school district from who, how, you know, how how we source, who we reach out to, what their first touch with us is, you know, through their exit decision to retire or to leave and go somewhere else. Um, and I would figure out what needs to be improved along that and how we could do that. I prioritize and, you know, knock them down, one, two, three. Um, would work very closely with teachers on that, obviously. That's that's who knows. Um, and again, like I said before, exit interviews and I think also interviews with teachers who turn down offers would be really important data to bring into that that plan. The school community really matters. Our teachers need to know that they are respected, that we honor their abilities and their capacity to be the teachers that our students need. Um, and I think we all need to think about how we can work through challenging situations while giving each other a little bit more grace um and 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 enough respect that we actually can on the other, on the other end. Um, I get get to the other side of a problem that actually comes up together with the with the workable solution.
Okay, Michael, how about you?
Um, yes, I would, I would say high turnover and hiring challenges are all too common across many industries and fields at this time. And I believe we we'll need to explore innovative approaches that serve the students well, while also bringing new economies to our overall programs. Uh, so that we can find ways to provide satisfaction in to the teachers in ways that go beyond just compensation. But meanwhile, we also want to keep our compensation and benefits for teachers as competitive as possible. And and so in the process of finding these these innovations, we will be able to take money and have more money for that end as well in in our budget. Um, and once we found the right mix to be successful, professional development and career growth that we offer will become a more valuable piece of the package for retention for the teachers and also for early career growth, which I understand right now is challenging because the way our steps work, um they stay on and they work for many years, but little happens until they reach, you know, eight, ten years out. And that that's just not okay when you're when you're getting started in your career and and expenses mount up. So that that's that's a problem that's gonna need to be addressed. Um and then other ways we can expand upon the value would include fostering a supportive work environment, leveraging community engagement and and really being data-driven in in the satisfaction component for teachers as as Suzie mentioned.
Okay, Max, how about you?
Um, you know, I think we're gonna have to get a little bit creative with some stuff. And uh let me preface this by saying, I, you know, I understand it's a long way from where we are today to any of these things I'm about to say. But, you know, one way is to get creative with benefits. You know, there are some ideas that have been bouncing around the community that I think are worth investigating around how we fund health insurance and things like that that are, you know, outside of our control and keep going up every year that that have essentially decreased teacher pay. Um, I think that we need to market ourselves to teachers and be very clear about what kind of district we are, because I do think, you know, as a small district, we are interesting to a certain type of teacher and we need to make it clear that, you know, market ourselves, you know, what the benefits of working in Piedmont are. And then lastly, and this is really outside the box, is I would love to begin the pro- what will be a very long process of figuring out how to do something like build teacher housing in Piedmont that is subsidized in some way, so that teachers can live in the community, because I think that that's really important. Um, and 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 have some sort of certainty over, you know, the rent that they pay. Um, ideas like that are ways that I think in addition to just raising money and and, you know, fighting for more money with the state is is ways that we can make Piedmont a more attractive place to teach.
Okay. Our final question is, uh, we're gonna start with Michael. Is in the face of declining enrollment, what are the best steps the Board of Education can take to ensure budget stability?
That's a tough question. Um, I I would say um the best steps we can take for stability will be to be very clear on where what our budget is going for and where where the um the effectiveness in it lies, so that so that we really are able to, aside from getting more, which is no guarantee how we're gonna do that, and we can keep, we can keep raising parcel taxes, but really whatever we do there, we have to make sure we can take that money and go further with it. And so that would be my my um sort of charge in terms of the way I would approach the problem. Um, let's see, other things, um voluntary giving can be made more robust and and also the value proposition of that, so that I think there's a little bit of communicating with potential donors as to why why it's a good investment and why, I mean, they already know it's for the kids, but but what are their kids getting and what exactly makes Piedmont education? So that they can literally point to it and say, th- this is the value we have here with pride. And I think that's something that that we we need to sort of reconvey. And and so I would work toward that end. To the extent, I mean, I think that would really be more on P E F, but but I I would support that as a school board member fully.
Okay, and um Max?
Um, yeah, hard question. Um, I think emphasize as Mike, to to echo Michael, I think emphasizing the giving, which the primary method is through the Piedmont Education Foundation. There are other methods too, but that's the most effective um to do it. I think um frankly, we all need to, you know, I don't think that the state funds education at a level that is um destined to be successful, and they keep adding on sort of unfunded mandates. And so I think I would encourage everybody to reach out to their um state representatives, uh governor, et cetera, et cetera, as much as possible and to get involved, because that's the only way that change happens. I know that that seems like a very nebulous answer, but it's the truth. Um, and third, I think we, you know, I agree with Michael again, that we need to market, you know, why giving to the schools is so important and also get creative with the money that we have and and that we get so that we're getting, you know, the most value for every dollar that we put into our schools. Um, because, you know, what makes Piedmont special is the community and the schools are really the the beating heart of that. And so um, you know, making that connection for people more and more, I think will lead to only positive outcomes with with everything and including budgetary stability.
Suzie?
So one, to be honest, I want to look a little bit more into the data and the forecasting around declining enrollment. I I know it is true, obviously. But I've been really curious about the forecasting models and kind of what what's that that's based on. I mean, we know enrollment is declining across California, across the country as a whole. Are we on a wave? Is this a typical ebb and flow or is this something different? I'd like to try to better understand that for longer-term planning. And I think I would, you know, largely, you know, thumbs up to what Max and and Michael said uh previously as well. Um, I think another thing I'd add would be there are plenty, there are there are families in town who have taken their kids out of Piedmont schools and placed them elsewhere. There are families who have left Piedmont purposely because they were not pleased with the schools and moved elsewhere as well. What in those, what turned those people away and what in those are actually, those issues are actually addressable? I think that's an important thing. Some of that is related to storytelling. I think for some parents, like think of somebody I know who have put their kids in private school instead of in in Piedmont, I think they just didn't really get what Piedmont was all about. I think uh they have an, we have an administration now that think is gonna be a little bit more responsive and has been much better in telling the story. Um, inter-district transfers as well. Um, we are, we are looking to them and they are part of our community and we're grateful and they're awesome to have here. And uh that helps to bring, I don't, don't look at this, don't look at any of them as as um as as dollar signs. I do not mean it that way. But that is another way for us to fill seats in town. Um, and when we have so many uh houses that are being passed down within generations, which is awesome. Yeah, so many teachers grew up in Piedmont. It's amazing.
Thank you, Suzie. Thank you. Um, all right, so now the candidates will make one-minute closing statements. We will reverse the order that we began with. Michael, you'll go first. You have one minute.
Uh, thank you. So I'll I'll just um reiterate my platform, which has three main points. Um, a great education for all in a district where every kid belongs. And I'm speaking to the questions and answers we've had, I support cost-effective board and school policies, which will directly result in better academic outcomes and emotionally and physically healthy kids while improving teacher and staff satisfaction. Because we have resource constraints, we're gonna have to be clear on our our priorities and act accordingly. The the big piece that I think is unique to me is the innovating, this is my second one, innovating to provide more academic depth and personalized learning. And I think we have a great strategic plan with promising metrics that have been set up in our LCAP. So I'm looking forward to building on that. And then the the last is the third one, investing in the success of Piedmont students. I care about the success of all students at Piedmont Unified and I'm focused on results. I believe, as we've said, using data analysis, logical reasoning to find the solutions to some of the harder problems we're faced with at this point.
Thank you, thank you. Suzie?
Yep, thanks. Thanks again to the Legum voters for hosting this forum and to everyone who's tuned in right now um live after coming off what was the vice presidential election debate of a lifetime in order to hear us say a few things. Um, and thank you all for continually showing up in a million different ways for our kids. It matters and it is the difference that makes our schools excellent. Let's come together to pass Measure P and in a few years, the flat parcel tax. And together, we can rebuild the trust and connections and relationships that are vital to our Piedmont school community. And we can keep working through the tough things that face us in public education in twenty twenty-four and beyond. Thanks.
All right. Thank you to our candidates for running for this office and for your, their participation this evening.
You forgot me again, Jennifer, sorry. You forgot me again, Jennifer. Sorry.
Sorry. Max, all right, sorry.
That is okay. I want to echo Suzie. Thank you to everyone for being involved and for being here. To all the people who are going to watch this on the various websites, thank you for taking an interest. I think that we are starting to regain our momentum as a district after all of the disruptions of the last many years. I want to continue that momentum and just continue to improve it. I think that community support is crucial to Piedmont schools. I want to make sure we maintain it. I want to urge everyone to vote for Measure P. Echoing Suzie again, I want to urge everyone to vote for the parcel tax and to just get involved in the schools and in their kids' education. My platform is outcomes-based decision-making, different pathways for different kids, parent and community communication and welcoming in, you know, all of the children who are coming and the families from all of the various places. And thank you all again, and I look forward to hearing from everyone more as this continues.
Great, thank you. Sorry again, Max. A lot of moving pieces. All right, thank you again for the candidates, and thank you to our audience participants and your interest in making informed choices. Your local league also participates in Vote 411, an online collection of candidates' information. We encourage you to view the candidates' resumes, platforms, and positions there. The web address is vote411.org. Your local leagues may also be hosting additional forums for area candidates who will be on your ballot. You can find information about upcoming forums, including how to attend and how to submit questions in advance on their websites. You can also access recordings of previous League of Women Voters of Piedmont forums on the LWVP YouTube channel. This forum is being recorded by KCOM. It will be available on the city's website at piedmont.ca.gov/meetingvideos. Members of the League of Women Voters do the hands-on work to defend democracy and empower voters. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you would like to be involved with the women and men helping make democracy work for everyone, it's easy to join the league. You can register to vote online through October 21st, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. Same-day registration is available in person through Election Day, November 5th, 2024. Ballots will begin to be mailed out starting October 7th. You can vote in person, by mail, or place your ballot in an official Alameda County ballot drop box. And please remember to cast your ballot on or before Election Day, November 5th. Encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote. Thank you. This officially ends our forum.